I call to order the City of Beulah's Planning Commission for Thursday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Will Commissioner Blockdite lead us in the pledge? Roll call, Claire.
Commissioner Blockdite?
Here.
Commissioner Ligon?
Here.
Commissioner Sarkia is absent. Vice Chairman Mercado?
Here.
Chair Hamel?
Here. Reordering of the agenda, I don't believe we need to do that tonight. Presentations, none. Approval of the minutes, the minutes of the special joint city council planning commission meeting of July seventh, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I second.
And I'll agree, say aye.
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 Aye. I sustain.
Okay.
As I was not there.
Okay. Um. Public comments, this is where we do have a few members in the audience tonight. If anyone wishes to address the planning commission on matters not on the agenda tonight. Now is the time. Do I have any takers on items that are not on the agenda? Does not appear to be so. Okay. Consent calendar, none. Continued public hearings, none. New public hearings. Resolution number twenty-two dash zero nine. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Beulah, California. Approving a one-year time extension twenty-two dash T E dash zero four. Request for final development plan. One-six dash F D P dash zero six. And tentative tract map T T M three-one-zero-six-one. For the Beulah and Hub project located at the Southern Terminus of Industrial Way. On Assessor's parcel number zero-nine-nine dash six-nine-zero dash zero-four-eight. And my making findings in support thereof.
Good evening, Chair Hamel and members of the commission. Before I get started, I just wanted to make a statement really quickly regarding a couple of commissioners' participation in this. This item. So staff has investigated the ability of two commissioners here, Commissioner Ligon and Commissioner Blockdite. Participating in this hearing. Based upon the rules and regulations of the F D C and the advice of the city attorney. Has been determined that the commissioners, these commission members are allowed to participate in the fight.
Okay, so no recusals tonight. The wall switch.
Um, so.
First one. The toggle. The first toggle switch. No, no. One more.
Followed.
There you go.
So.
Yeah, so um. The applicant here tonight has requested that the public hearing on this item be continued to a date certain. This item was noticed for public hearing at the September first, twenty twenty-two meeting. However, due to a lack of forum. This meeting could not be held on September first and was announced to be rescheduled to September fifteenth, which is tonight. Therefore, this item was continued. To by staff action to tonight's meeting, fifteen. And the applicant is now requesting an additional continuation on this item to the planning commission meeting of October sixth, twenty twenty-two. So tonight, the recommendation of this item is that the planning commission continue the public hearing on this item to the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting of October sixth.
And so do we motion and vote on that? Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When is the? When has the the plan expired?
Oh, so these, this particular project expired, would expire in February of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
We will make the motion to continue this till our meeting at October sixth.
My second. Roll call.
Vice Chairman Mercado?
Aye.
Chair Hamel?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockdite?
Aye.
Commissioner Ligon?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarkia?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes passes five to zero or the continuance to our next meeting scheduled for October sixth. Next item, resolution number twenty-two dash zero eight. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Beulah, California. Approving a one-year time extension twenty-two dash T E dash zero three. Request for the final development plan one-six dash F D P dash zero seven for the network B U E dash five project. That and called the project. Located at the Southern Terminus of Industrial Way Assessor's parcel numbers zero-nine-nine-six-nine-zero-zero-four-five. And zero-nine-nine-six-nine-zero-zero-zero-one. And making findings in support thereof. Planning Director Kiefer.
Good evening, Chair Hamel. So again, this item was noticed for public hearing on September first, twenty twenty-two. And due to a lack of forum, the meeting did not be held. And it was announced that this would, this item would be rescheduled to tonight, September fifteenth. And so again, this item was continued by staff actions to September fifteenth meeting tonight, so tonight's meeting. So. An application has been submitted by Central Holding LLC, the property owner, and Gavin Moores and Monty Roy. Acting as the agent for the project for a one-year time extension. For the previously approved network or B U E five project located on the Southern Terminus of Industrial Way. The time extension is a request for an extension of the final development plan of the project, which is included in the attachment two. For the application in the project description, as well as the attachment three, which is the approved project. So just a little bit of background, on December twenty-first, twenty seventeen, the planning commission adopted the resolution that would approve the final development plan and lot line adjustment for this project. However, the, so the lot line adjustment expired on December twenty-first, twenty nineteen. However, the applicant has applied for and received approval for a, for from the planning commission for a new lot line adjustment in May of this year. So therefore, the lot line adjustment is not a part of this application tonight. Additionally, just noting that at the applicant's request, back in twenty nineteen, a director's determination was made to include minor modifications to the project. Which would include a change of the location of the offsite retention basin to, from one adjacent parcel to another. Just to note, the final development plans expire after five years. And notwithstanding general time limits set by the Beulah municipal code. The code does allow the applicant to apply for up to two one-year time extensions for the final development plan. So this is the project's first request for a one-year time extension. The final, this final development plan was set to expire on December twenty-first, twenty nineteen. However, the applicant applied for a time extension on August first, twenty twenty-two, in advance of the date of expiration. So the planning commission may, upon the cause shown, approve a time extension for one year. Staff is unaware of any reason to deny the extension and it's reasonable to, for the planning commission to approve the request at this time. Just a note, the original application for the final development plan was filed by Moho Development, V L L C. And the agent was Gavin Moores. The property was recently acquired in twenty twenty-one by Central Holding LLC. So, given Mr. Moore's expressed desire to retain property entitlements and in light of the extenuating circumstances of COVID-nineteen. Staff considers this time extension request to be reasonable. So at this time, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission consider adoption of resolution twenty-two dash zero eight as written in the staff. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me, or Gavin is also here in the audience available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
No. Just to clarify. In two thousand seventeen was approved and it's been recently sold, was sold last year. But the project with the plans. Do you intend to do major modifications to this or, because that, yeah.
Please.
Chair Hamel, Commissioner Ligon, give you a little bit of background. What happened in the midst of doing the entabl- as soon as we, after we got the entitlements. Our original partner, they had a tragic incident in the family, which involved unable to continue those trust issues, et cetera. That relates to that. So we went, I went out on a journey, partnered up with Ed on this potential George on this project with Central Holdings. And we've done some minor changes to roof lines. We have a significant tenant signed up for this building now. And we've really been working with them on floor plan layouts and making sure we've got bathrooms, equipment pads, and the correct locations which they need. And then, of course, we needed to put a additional, just interior changes. But we're really happy with where we are right now. I think we've got a much better looking building on the outside. And we've submitted our grading plans, we've submitted our improvement plans. Been a long, long journey on the parcel map merger. I have one last signature to get. And then that parcel map merger will be recorded, hopefully before the next meeting we have. So we're really excited and eager to get forwards. I'd love to have a grading permit right now, but I just don't have it approved just yet. But it's coming very, very soon, I hear. So that'll be great. So we've got our tracks ready to go and we're anxious to see this project move forward.
So I imagine you don't have enough time to complete the final plans by December of this year.
Well.
Hence the one-year extension.
Timeline is not at air. Well, there's a number of reasons, the number of approvals that we need to get from the city to enable us to do that. We've been in a, in a plan check process now for about seven weeks, I think, six to seven weeks we're coming in on once submitted. So it's better to err on the side of caution. We didn't want to be coming in at the last minute in December or January saying, please, can we get an extension? Here is much easier to do it now and not have to worry about it so we can keep focused on what we need to do.
Yeah, I think it's good foresight to do it in advance. You think you're going to be ready to break ground soon?
I would love to break ground tomorrow.
Nothing's holding you up?
Now, we have contract selected, we are ready to go. We have a stock power permit, we brought some dirt on today. But yes, we are anxiously awaiting a grading improvement.
Great, thank you.
Right, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Sarkia, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Vice Chair, okay, no questions for me. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to say anything under the public here? Do you want me to repeat that?
Yeah. My name is Scott Keller. Resident of. This fine city for the last twenty-one years.
Awesome.
And I also live in Rancho de Maria. Um. There's a lot of opposition. As, as I hope you all know, from the residents of the neighborhood to this project. For, and there is many, many reasons why. I can't, and a lot of other people can't see any benefit to us in that neighborhood. Over this property being developed in this fashion. And, you know, I guess I'm the only one that showed up tonight that. Is, is willing to, you know, speak up on the matter and whatever, but, but there's a lot of people watching this very closely. And, and, and to tell you the truth, you know, with some of the, some of the things that have happened locally. Here, just in the last week or so, like what Solvang's doing and, you know, shutting down construction totally because. They don't have the water, you know, to allocate to, to support construction. And, you know, the, the people that are gonna work there, live there, whatever, you know? And, you know, hey, we're two miles down river, you know? And, you know, the, the whole water thing is, is very, very iffy. There was also an article I read just recently where they. The cannabis farms have been drawing groundwater and everything. And there's a lot less down there than what people thought there was as a result. Because they've been drawing out, you know, the groundwater and lowering the water table. And I don't see how, you know, anybody is going to. And this town is going to allocate, you know? If that construction happens and the water they use. And then the rest of the town is gonna be on reduced water ratios? That doesn't make any sense. Also, if you look at the map, the flood paint plane for that property goes way up further than what, what people think it does. Now with climate change happening. You know, not, not only, you know, here we are in a drought, you know, a severe drought for the third year in a row. You know, and who knows when that's gonna quit, but it will at some point. And, and they're also saying that when El Nino comes. It's gonna be a, a very strong one. And we haven't had one like that in twenty years, probably. You know, it could be a disaster down there. Zaca Creek flows right along the edge there, there's no abutments, there's no dikes, there's no relief. If it stays in the channel, everything's fine. If it comes up over the, over the sides, you got a real mess. A real mess. And, and, and that's just, that's just part of the problems. You know, in, in my mind, you know, and of course, you know, I didn't know about the Willem, Willemson property or whatever. But, but I thought that was the, an excellent area for developing a sports complex for this town. You know, soccer fields, baseball fields, et cetera, et cetera. Because in other. I, I grew up in Santa Maria and I'm, I'm there quite a bit because I still got family. But they have, they have taken areas like that that were prone to flooding. And, and doing that, because if it floods, it's not gonna ruin anything. You know, as soon as the water soaks in, boom, you know, they're off to the races again. But, you know, if you build a bunch of stuff. On that piece of property down there and, and you have a massive flood over there. You know, how's that gonna affect everybody? You know, this, you know, the city gonna have to go down there and clean all that up? You know, how's that gonna work? I don't know, to tell you the truth, but it's, it's something to consider. If, if y'all were, and you, you know, you folks are the ones and, and I gotta hand it to you for donating your time. You know, to, to the city for, for different, for this. Effort that you, that you do, you know? Overseeing the planning commission and everything, but. You know, please hear our voices.
Okay.
You know, there's a lot of us.
Thank you very much for your comments. So I'm gonna provide a little bit of clarification for you. And I'm gonna try to speak loudly. I usually am not, I'm usually not accused of not speaking loudly.
I'm a disabled vet and my disability is hearing.
So the project you're talking about is the one we first discussed and we tabled that for a continuance for October sixth.
Yes, I understand.
That's why your friends and neighbors are not here.
Right.
So that one's tabled and that's what your concerns are regarding.
Right.
Okay, this one we're looking at right now is on the other side of Summerland Wines and it's an industrial property.
No fun to be deaf.
So we appreciate your concerns and maybe you should come back in a couple of weeks.
Letting me speak and, and I'll.
Get out of our way.
No worries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments on item number three tonight? Okay, I will close it to the public and bring it back to commission. Any further comments or do we have a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
We make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash oh eight, resolution of the planning commission of the City of Beulah, California, approving a one-year time extension. Twenty-two dash T E dash oh three, request for final development plan sixteen F D. Twenty two dash T dash oh three, request for final development plan sixteen FDP oh seven, for the network. B U E dash five project. The project located at the Southern Terminus Industrial Way, Sester's Parson's number. Let me eat all that. And I do oh nine nine six nine zero oh four five. Oh nine nine six nine zero oh four six and oh nine nine six nine zero 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 one and making findings in support thereof.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Commissioner Blockhead?
Hi.
Vice Chair Mercado?
Hi.
Commissioner Liggitt?
Hi.
Commissioner Sarkia?
Hi.
Chair Hamel?
I. Okay, motion passes five to zero. Good luck and continue with your grading permits and everything.
Yes.
Okay, resolution number four, item number four. Resolution number twenty two dash zero seven, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Beulah, California. Approving a final development plan eighteen dash FDP dash zero one. And a conditional use permit one eight dash CUP dash zero one for a new gas station. Convenience store and quick serve restaurant located at six five three Avenue of Flags Assessor's parcel number zero nine nine. Three zero 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 one seven and making findings in support thereof. And I believe we have Planner Tucker on the Zoom to present to us tonight.
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair Hamel and members of the planning commission. Can you all hear me okay?
I mean, you're not mic'd. Hang on a second. I mean, I could barely hear, but not really.
On this, it's not. All right, I'll continue talking a little bit to see if you can, if it's improving. I'm all the way up.
It's pretty quiet.
We can barely hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all the way. Yeah.
Sometimes Zoom has its own volume too.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, she's like, I can.
Not gonna run across the street.
Far left where I think where the microphone is.
Okay, let me, um, see if I can pull. Is this any better now?
Woo. Yeah.
Too much?
I apologize.
Sorry?
I think that's perfect. Can you hear me?
Okay, yeah, so I can hear you. I just put my input level all the way up, so, um. That should, that should be okay then. Okay, anyways, thank you. Members of the planning commission, um. I'm here to present this evening the, um, project that Chair Hamel introduced. Uh, the resolution for, um, this is a project, um, for which, uh, the applicants are, um, Jeanette. Verdugo with AGC Designs and Alex Cuevas, the architect, um. Along with, um, what, both of them are in the audience tonight and the owner of the property. Is one one five nine Flags Avenue LLC. Uh, represented by, um, Simranjit Sandhu, who I understand is also in the audience. With my understanding that he would be there. So, um, I'm going to go through my, um, presentation. And again, this is a continued item for the, from the September first meeting that was not held, so, um, it got moved forward to, um. Tonight's meeting. There we go. So the project site is located, um, at six fifty three Avenue Flags. Which is basically the very nor northernmost tip. Of, um, the Avenue Flags where, um, the freeway off ramp. Comes down, um, on the southbound lanes. The park property is about three quarters of an acre. It is in the Avenue Flag specific plan boundary. And the underlying jo- zone is general commercial. Current uses on the property are truck trailer rentals, auto repair and miscellaneous vehicle storage. Adjacent uses. To the south and the east are commercial. To the west is residential. And to the north is also commercial and roadway. The application was filed for a final development plan and concurrent condition use permit. For a new Arco gasoline station with a canopy covering thirty one hundred eighty square feet of area. It would have six fuel dispensers with two pumps each. Basically twelve gas pumps. A related AMPM. Convenience store, well as a quick serve restaurant in the one story commercial building. Which, um, totals forty four hundred square feet. I would just like to note, um, when this project first came before the planning commission. Uh, there was a second story, um, on the interior that has been eliminated. Demolition of the existing pavement and structures would occur, um, in order to build this new project. And the existing structures consist of a former gas station building and a canopy. Parking for the project, there's twenty six spaces required. And twenty seven are provided. This is a combination of stripe parking and under the canopy as well, the gas canopy. And there's one loading space required for the project and that is provided. There are two primary access points onto Avenue Flags, which would be used by the customers. And there is one gate controlled driveway on Avenue, uh, I'm sorry, on Central Avenue. And this would be for the fuel trucks only. When we look at the, uh, site plan, I'll point out that. This was felt to be the the best arrangement and gave trucks the most maneuvering space to be able to. Come in to make the field of deliveries, which was a concern in the beginning of flying, planning commission level, so. That's, that was the solution for them. For that. And there's onsite water, um, stormwater retention as well. They mentioned it is in the, um, Avenue Flag specific plan. See, project site is up here at the top. Underlying, um, zoning is general commercial as is the underlying, uh, land use. So this is located in the gateway north district of the specific plan. This is a travelers oriented district that encourages visitor serving and vehicle support uses. And this particular site is suited for proposed traveler oriented services and. Such as is being provided, um, by the, um, proposal. And because this is at such a prominent location, um, at the northern gateway. To Beulah and first property that is seen on that freeway off ramp as people are entering. Beulah and it provides an opportunity to provide a welcome gateway. Um, entrance to Beulah. The architecture must comply with the Art Deco style. The structures that would be allowed on this site, um, are mercantile and specialty in which this. Project does qualify as such. The maximum building height in this area is thirty five feet. The project falls underneath that maximum height. And the, um, specific plan that did encourage zero lot lines and. Maximum twenty foot, five foot setbacks in certain areas. And variation could be considered to accommodate unique circumstances and irregularly shaped sites such as this. So there was some flexibility in the placement of the buildings on this site. So here is the site plan, um. Again, this is Avenue Flags, the two entrances off of Avenue Flags are right here. So this would be the customer entrance. Uh, strike parking spaces are along the commercial building, which is right here. And the gas canopies are right here. The entrance, the driveway entrance is on, um, off of Central Avenue is the entrance for the fuel trucks. To be able to come onto the site and there's a clear path for them to enter and exit onto Avenue Flags. And there's additional, uh, parking at the northern portion of the site. As well as, um, welcome. To Beulah signage along, uh, monumentation signage at this location. They mentioned primary access is from Avenue Flags. The existing driveway that's along Avenue Flags would be closed. In order to, uh, provide the two new driveways. Fuel truck access only on Central Avenue. There's an existing driveway that would be closed. And this would be the, the new driveway would be moved to about fifty foot feet to the north. So this would be for fuel deliveries only, it would be some mechanism for gate control entrance. Um, no customers or employees will be coming through here. So this is the floor plan for the, uh, quick serve restaurant. As well as the, um, AMPM mini market. And it's a single story. These are the building elevations. And this is the northern elevation, basically the front elevation that faces to the north and faces to the, um. Towards the gas canopies, the entrance to the AMPM and entrance to the, um, restaurant. And the other elevations are. The, the right elevation, which is in essence the. West elevation that faces the residential, um, what faces Central Avenue and the residential uses across from Central Avenue. So this would be the left elevation, which is. Here, which is what would be seen from Avenue Flags. And then this, the rear elevation faces south and that's what would be seen from the. Interior property line and the adjacent uses to the south, which. Leave there's a, uh, existing gas station to the south of the, um. Property. And these are the elevations for the, uh, gas station area, the fuel dispensers, um, and the canopy with the Arco stripe and logo on it. This is the. Color and materials, um, cut sheet that was provided as part of the, um, application and I understand that the applicant has brought in an actual color and materials board. So, um. That's I, I can see it back there, so that's available for the commission to view and take a close look at. Uh, summary of the proposed signage was provided. And it provides overall the dimensions and general locations of proposed signs. And based upon a, a review of the summary. It appears that the project is under the maximum sign area that would be permitted for this property. The maximum, um, sign area allowed is four hundred twelve square feet. And based upon this overview of signage, uh. They are proposing, uh, three hundred twenty two square feet approximately. Uh, um, in the conditions of approval, um, we've noted that a master sign program and a separate sign permit application will be required. And conformance with Art Deco design guidelines will also be required for the signage. And the thing, just need to provide more information on the lettering and design of the signs. Just descriptive information and also, uh, address how it, um. Conforms with the Art Deco design guidelines for signage. So this is a further illustration of signs proposed, um. The quick serve restaurant would have, uh, signage here. I'm not certain that at this point the exact use or tenant for that has been tied down, so, um. There is not a. Specific sign provided here to illustrate, but that's where the location is. And then, of course, the AMPM. Um, signage is above the entrance to the convenience store. Um, on the bottom left here, we have the proposed sign that would be at the northern, uh, portion of the property. Be right as vehicles are coming off the off ramp from Southbound Avenue Flags. And the smaller monument sign. I believe it's located, um, right by the southernmost driveway, uh, along Avenue Flags. Close to the, um, close to the, um, main building. So, um, a photometric analysis was provided, um, just, just need to make sure to review this once all the. Proposed lighting is further defined that the spill over at the property line is no more than. Point five foot candles at the property lane adjacent to or across the street from the residential uses. And I believe it's one point five foot candles on the interior property line, um, next to the. Um, adjacent commercial and and no light spill over onto the street as well. There were limited design details provided in terms of the type of exterior light fixtures that are being proposed and, um. Further details will be required of this and it's part of the conditions of approval that. Need to be provided for the lighting on the gas pump and the canopy lighting. And the lighting does need to be shielded to minimize offsite impacts. The security lighting and all lighting on the property actually needs to be dark sky friendly and comply with the Art Deco design requirements. And again, security lighting needs additional detail. Uh, landscape plan was provided early on, um, in the project review process. Um. And, you know, they provided, you know, adequate documentation and provided, um, essentially, um. You know, uh, a well thought out landscape plan. Uh, since. Um, this, uh, version of the landscape plan was submitted, the. Base maps and the slightly at configuration changed slightly. Um, the parking, um. Some of the parking stalls on the northern portion here were shifted. And so the grading plans and the, um. Site plan are slightly different than the landscape plan, so. We're including in the conditions of approval that they need to update the landscape plan to conform with the underlying base maps and. To be consistent with all the other plan sheets. And to provide the landscape that is required, um, along the, um, trash enclosure and along the, um. Reconfigured parking areas, which is not, um, shown. And there were other areas where the landscape plan did not go into enough detail, um, so that's a condition of approval, um, for that to be provided. But overall, uh, steadily designed, you know, landscape, um, landscaping. Grading and drainage plan, um. Anybody has any questions, but they are providing onsite retention. It has been reviewed by the Public Works Department and, you know, appropriate conditions have been placed on it, so. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, the total parking required for the project is twenty six spaces. And there's twenty seven spaces. Required, I mean, provided, sorry. And these spaces consist of, um. Uh, twelve spaces. Under the gas canopy, so, um, we're thinking that is that when customers are coming onsite. Many of them are coming to put gas in their cars, so that's where they will be parked. So, um, the site appears to be adequately parked. There are two spaces marked as electrical vehicle spaces. It was not clear as to, uh, whether charging stations are actually being provided, so perhaps the applicant, um, may get up to speak and maybe address that. Uh, this is just an overview of project consistency with the Avenue Flag specific plan and the CR zone. It's generally consistent, it's an appropriate use, it's a, you know, it's a suitable use for the site. Um, the sighting of the, uh, buildings, uh, you know, it it's appropriate for the site and the building type, everything is appropriate for the site. Building heights and li- um, coverage, landscaping. It's all consistent where there are, um, some deficiencies are with the design. Style, it's, um, you know, the. Project is required to, um, conform with the architectural design theme of the Avenue Flags, which is Art Deco. And the, um, applicant has, you know, provided their interpretation of the Art Deco style. Um, there have been comments made about asking for additional detailing and really further depiction of Art Deco. Elements on the, um, building design itself. So I just wanted to, just quickly, I'm gonna go through this. The original, um, preliminary review by the planning commission occurred, um, twenty eighteen. With comments at that time, you know. Uh, to require attractive signage, apply the, uh, Art Deco. Design standards, the building and the gas canopy. Include vehicle charging stations if possible. Landscaping is very important, and the project. Site maneuvering for, um, gasoline trucks, which has been addressed, um. Vehicle or access along Central Avenue that has been addressed. So shortly after the. Planning Commission preliminary review issued an incomplete letter and. Subsequent to that time, there were several lengthy rounds of draft project revisions before a resubmital took place. Think about two and a half years later. And this was the first major resuminal of revised plans and responses to the incomplete letter. So the project was modified to address some concerns related to Art Deco and Art Deco design details. They limited access on Central Avenue, they enhanced their landscaping design, they showed some EV parking spaces. And we recirculated again for comments. To. Note, yes, the resuminal, because it was, you know, two and a half years later, we recirculated it to the planning and Public Works Department. We circulated again for design review and fire and building. So there were some comments that came back at that time that still conformance with the Avenue Flags specific plan requirements was still needed. Consistency with the Art Deco theme. That we asked for additional design detailing and all the building structures. More detail on the lighting signage. And Public Works, you know, commented on the, you know, the driveway access along Central Avenue, which was, you know. Generally perceived to be a good solution for truck maneuvering area. So the second major resuminal occurred in October of twenty twenty-one, a year later. And again, another, you know, further round of revised plans and design. And response to the outstanding items from the incomplete letter. So this version of the plans is in essence what is before the planning commission tonight is being considered. And when the submittal was received by the planning staff is also brought to our attention that had, there had been some changes in the property ownership and title documentation, so. We requested all of these documents to be provided and. So it took a little while to get everything in, so we're, once those came in, we were able to move it forward to. Planning Commission hearing. And so in general, comments on this. Again, we circulated it to design review, so that was the third design review from our contract architect. They commented, well, while some of the Art Deco elements are reflective in the design, the. Proposed project overall does not represent the high standard of design and materials. And colors as called for by the Avenue Flags specific plan and the standard that. The city is held of the other projects, so the three projects that have been approved on the avenue too, so. This was a comment that came back at this point again. And so the key elements, and I can just quickly go through these, but it's all regarding the Art Deco design. There's lack of detailing of building elements for Art Deco. The right elevation, the elevation facing Central Avenue will be highly visible. And it is, you know, will be requested that the impact be minimized on the adjacent residences. And perhaps to consider some Art Deco ornamentation, enhanced ornamentation on that side, right now it's a. Pretty much a flat wall. Similarly, with the rear elevation, it will be visible from Avenue Flags as well as the may adjacent neighboring property. Enhanced Art Deco ornamentation on this and breaking up the large expanses of the blank walls. And because this is such a landmark prominent site, it's a really a perfect opportunity to to provide a statement. On the northern gateway entry to the city of Yolton, this would be something that the project could really benefit from and. We, you know, we're encouraging the applicant to consider some enhancements to the. Tower design and to create a opportunity state, a landmark statement at this really prominent location. And it was commented several times that the AMPM sign is set against a. Faux wood backplate, it's aluminum, just with wood grain on it, is not Art Deco material. And it was also commented that the earth tones are not typically Art Deco. And that finally, the fuel pump and canopy area needs more Art Deco elements. Additional comments, I mentioned this before in the landscape design, that they just need to bring their landscape design plans up. To the same, to the base plan and same configuration as the other plans. And that it was pointed out that the impacts on the residential uses do need to be minimized, so there would be. No outdoor music or the use with PA system allowed. The fuel deliveries would be restricted to daytime business hours and that the signage facing the west. Area facing the the residences should be not non-illuminated, and this includes the gas canopy strike. I mentioned this before, lighting and signing still insufficient detail, but more more detail is requested. Public Works comments were that site, street and sidewalk improvement plans will need to be submitted along with. The construction documents and these will need to reflect decorative sidewalk and street lighting elements. Landscaping, street furnishings, et cetera, as required by the Avenue Flags specific plan. The trash enclosure design. Made a comment here that it needs to be screened from public view and separated from the adjacent parking stalls by a landscape strip, so. This will need to get incorporated into the updated landscape plans. And also typically at this stage, a letter would be included in their. Project package from Marboard, which is our trash collection service provider. Indicating that they've approved the design and layout and it's adequate for their trash collection needs. So this will be a condition of approval, and if there's any design changes. Needed as a result of that, the applicant would be responsible for making those. So this, in terms of the environmental review, the project meets the criteria for infill development, class thirty-two exemption from environmental review. Because the site is less than five acres, it's surrounded by urban uses. It is generally consistent with the applicable specific plan, general plan and zoning. And it would not result in significant traffic noise, air quality or water quality impacts. Per the Avenue Flags specific plan mitigated negative declaration, which was prepared in October of twenty seventeen. When the Avenue Flags specific plan was adopted. So there is really no further environmental review needed for this particular project, that it was adequately addressed as part of the specific plan. So the recommendation before the planning commission tonight is, we've laid out the options that the commission can consider and. Number one is the adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash zero seven, which is. Resolution, the planning commission approving the final development plan and conditional use permit for the new gas station and restaurant. Second option would be to adopt resolution twenty-two oh seven with revised or additional conditions of approval. And the third option would be to continue the matter to a future planning commission meeting. If the planning commission feels that they would like the applicant to address specific project issues. And bring back modified project plans for consideration at a future planning commission meeting. And that ends my formal presentation, I am available to answer questions. From the planning commission, if there are any. And Chair Hamel, as I mentioned before, the applicant and the property owner are in the audience and. I understand that they don't have a full presentation to make, but they may. Be, you know, they may be interested in getting up and saying a few words about the project, so with that, I turn it back to you, Chair Hamel.
Okay, thank you very much, Planner Tucker. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for your attention to detail and. Pouring many long hours and years into this project. Does the, before I turn it back to the commission for questions, does the applicant or owner have? Additional comments or additional presentation or anything?
Good evening, Alex Cuevas with AGC Design Concept represent the architectural firm. Just want to make one clarification, actually, I'm very happy to be here after six years. Our first application was not in two thousand eighteen, was filed in August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen. We've been going back and forth, like I have never gone back and forth so much. This actually, I had a conversation with our planner when I was driving here, because I was trying to find the address. So that way I was on time and I'm surprised about all the comments. Far as we understood, far as my client understood, if our Arco understood. This all this back and forth for so long, for years. Comments on this, comments on that, now that we were and we were going to be in front of the planning commission. The architecture of the building, the design was already something that was agreed upon. And when it was going to be your decision to say yes or no. I didn't know that our planner have more comments and more questions and more changes or suggestions. This to us is a total surprise. I came here after six years, I've been here like three times, two times, seeing you, I've been here a couple of times. Besides the displays of the city research and all that. I surprised, completely surprised.
So what are you surprised about?
About the comments about the, we're not meeting the Art Deco, that we need more details on the building. You have no idea how many design, I can show you the design that we did. I got so many designs and we keep asking the question, please, why, why can't you just be straightforward? We're an architectural firm, I'm not too proud to say, just tell me what you want and we can put it together. Well, you're the architectural firm, you need to come up with something, we can't tell you what to do, but it's been six years. We know disrespect to anyone, but it's it's insane. It's insane, all of the comments, like just one little comment, submittal, have to wait two months to get a respond. It is true, it took us, there was a gap between COVID and all that, that we didn't resubmit. But since about a year ago, then we went full force. It's been going over and over and over, we had a lot of resistance from Arco. Far as the architecture, because as a corporate institution, they want a box, they want their standard, they don't want anything else. So me in the middle, you guys, Arco, my client, trying to please everyone, trying to justify this and this and that. And when Irma told us that we were going to be in front of the planning commission and we have gone so many times back and forth. We were under the impression they were coming here to get a decision from you, I know you have the power to say. Approve this, approve, but with that kind of presentation, it's not fair. Because the presentation, all it did, it talked about. They're not complying with this, there is not enough detail, the the back of the building is this. I'm going, wait a second, what happened? It's surprising, really, yes, I told you over the phone when I was driving here. In it, I mean, this is like somebody just hit me and I didn't even know what happened.
Okay, I'm gonna take your comments under advisement, but I'm going to say. I am equally surprised with you because I was here four and a half years ago with the April twenty eighteen application. A lot of these concerns from the architect review for the third time. And our initial comments and concerns, they're the same thing.
I hundred percent agree with you, but you have to understand that we worked with Irma for two years. And we have in our mind, because we keep giving her more design, different design. She actually, what you see here, I can show it to you, is a copy of the design that she sent to me. And that's what we use.
Okay, well, I'm I'm not going to allow you to to speak negatively about our staff.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying anything negative.
We have a very experienced and very professional staff.
Same here, same here, I've been doing this for for years, so what what all I'm saying to you is that. We. I'm really surprised, you might say that you're surprised that how come we didn't address this item? How come then staff didn't say to us, you know what, we're still not happy?
I also want to say back in April of twenty eighteen, and it may have been a different. Owner, a different part of the ownership team at the time, but that that. Preliminary review was presented that it had been the Art Deco design had been submitted to. Corporate Arco and they agreed to it.
No, they, no, it's not a different order, it's the same owner, it's the same owner.
Okay.
It's the same, same owner.
Okay. Do you have anything to add presentation wise, other than?
We have the exhibits and when you guys say presentation. We were requested to put together a perspective to represent the look of the building when you're coming off the freeway on the south.
Okay.
And that's what we have, we have all the exhibit, they show, she showed on the on the screen, that's what we have.
Okay, okay, so what we're gonna do is we will, I will turn it back to the commission and we will start asking questions.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So first, in regards to the ownership. Before we were like three people in the ownership, one person walked away because this project was taking too long and too much money. But we bought this property in two thousand sixteen and spending so much money on arts and design and Mr. Alexis Narchi. So he's working really hard, I'm really appreciated that with Irma, she's working really hard too. Back and forth, she spent a lot of time, Alex spent a lot of time. We personally were talking to RPMPM trying to convince them, but you all know they have their own standards, but they were really helpful too. But it's the only thing, like some things, because they're a big corporation, so some things they don't want to. Agree on and but still they were very helpful helpful with that. And but we are in a spot where they don't even want to listen to us anymore, like they're like. You said this, we did this, you said this, we did this, and this is not the first article we are doing with them, we have other RPMPMs even on one-on-one. And this one really, we took a hit on, so. Please, episode, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, questions, Commissioner Blockdike? Commissioner Ligon?
No questions. However, it didn't seem like you're trying to convince us to pass this. When you came up to give your presentation. So. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarkia, questions?
No questions, but the, I'm not a big fan of the color scheme. And the signs are way too big. So it doesn't look Art Deco still. That was my comment.
Thank you. Vice Chair Mercado.
I I agree with all the comments made, I understand your situation and I can also understand your your situation with a corporate entity. But I also. Think that this is the gateway to what our Avenue Flags want to be. And the Art Deco standards that we have already approved for some other developments. I really feel that, you know, we shouldn't just slide it as as much as. Just trying to get this done and I. Saw this earlier whenever I was on the planning commission the first time, when it first came up. I I really think that. Some of the comments that were made. By. Our consultants. Were genuine in in fact that, you know, certain items, whether it's wood. Are not Art Deco, there are certain standards that have to be met and I just feel that. With this being the gateway to Avenue of the Flags, we need to have more Art Deco. I. your design of the buildings or just the replacement of the buildings are great. Uh I just, it just needs to be more Art Deco. You could go up one-on-one north and stop at Salinas or anywhere else, and that'd be the exact same thing. And there's no Art Deco standards there. I I I travel up one-on-one through Monterey on a on a regular basis. And I I feel that if that's just what we're looking at, then this is a project that needs to be rethought and brought back to us at a later date with more consistency, what we are asking for being Art Deco. Uh and work with staff and make this a viable project. Because I think it could work out for you just as much it can work out for us, because it's, people have to come off one-on-one, boom, you're right there. If you need gas and the right little restaurant, it could be a goldmine. But we're asking for a certain standard. And um I just think that those standards have to be uh me met. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I say one thing?
Sure.
I maybe I came across a different way. I apologize, but I'm not trying to convince you. But that's exactly what I actually been begging for, just direction. Because that's all I, that's all I was asking. I've been asking, please tell me, how do you want this building to look like? So I can take that, put it on on a design and take it to Arco and say, this is what the city wants. But if I get just a little information, I try to put it together, then I go to Arco, no, just change this. That's that's the situation that I'm in. All I want is just for Irma to say this. And that's what I was saying before. I'm surprised because I thought that that was good enough. I understand, I'm an architectural field. I know the Art Deco, how things work, the design, the details and all that. But the reason why I thought that we were here is because we found between the city and Arco, the happy medium.
Right.
And that's, that's the reason why we are here. Because we thought, okay, we are fine. But I agree with you. If you have a design that you want us to, let's say, I don't want to say this, but copy, this is the architecture that we want, we're fine. But we've been working on this for six years. So if Irma can say, Alex, you need to copy this, so I can copy, take it to Arco and say, look, you want an Arco station there, this is what we need to do. Otherwise, there is no gas station. That that's all, that's all I'm asking.
Okay. Thank you. We have another question?
Yeah, one another comment.
Okay.
The uh maybe staff can send him some uh copies of the um artists and representations of the other projects that we have approved uh that we do like the Art Deco design of them. Um I think that will probably help you.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
And also the the back of the building, I was never told you need more Art Deco on the back. I mean, it's hidden. We're always working on the front of the building. That's a surprise to me about, you know, you need to do the entire building because the back is going to be seen just a little corner. I understand, but that was, that was never, anyway. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I am probably, I had like fifteen questions for you. But I think we're gonna be back to the original point again. Um but what I'm going off of is, again, this is the report that's in the package. It's from our architect review consultant. Um page number two, there's fourteen items, not even half of them are addressed. And and in my opinion, again, these were issues that were back in twenty eighteen. Um same thing, uh page ten from Irma's presentation, again in the package, same thing, it's, you know, I'm gonna we don't need to go through it all. Um same thing, not enough Art Deco, not, you know, the monument sign, so on and so forth. Um at this point, this is a public hearing. I will turn it over to the public for any public comments, and it doesn't look like there's anyone in the audience for a public comment. So I will close the public comment section, public hearing section. And I will bring it back to Planning Commission. And I have several comments uh to go through. But I will come back to the planning commission for any additional comments or questions that we haven't yet.
What are?
Okay. Anything over here?
I think Commissioner Sarkia's uh suggestion is good. We have recently passed approved certain developments on Avenue of the Flags. And they're quite detailed. We are very strict with the detail on those. Down to the color of the tile. So look at those that you find on the website, or I'm sure the staff could provide you with those. And hopefully that gives you guidance.
I think you guys.
Oh, no further.
Okay, anything else?
I I think I'm good.
Okay, so here's my soapbox as commission chair. Uh Bulton approved the specific plan for the Avenue of Flags almost five years ago. This was after many years of community input. Uh many back and forth with the planning commission and many back and forth with city council. Um it was approved at the end of twenty seven or late fall twenty seventeen. Three of us are still here that were involved in that process, some of us at different capacities. But we were either on planning commission or city council at the time. Um I echo what Vice Chair Mercado said. Um this property and this application is the northern gateway into our city. It is, it is your opportunity to shine and we want you to shine um with Art Deco, because it's everyone entering from the one-on-one going south uh coming into town. Um here's one of my things, uh when you ask for input, uh I always go to Google. And I did some research on Arco itself, which has had very strong history with Art Deco. And when I think of Art Deco, and this is when we had our community meetings, you think of gas stations. I mean, that's number one. You think of car dealerships, you think of diners, you think of bank buildings, that kind of thing. Um so I'm, I mean, we, this is your opportunity to shine. Um we have approved three projects on the avenue. They are all what we consider the southern gateway into the avenue and into our uh quote-unquote, what we perceive to be our walkable downtown at some point in the future. Um we do apply the same standard to everyone and will continue to do so. And I know that there's this stuff with Arco and the corporate logo and the corporate branding, but we can't grant exceptions or exemptions because of that. I have to say, I'm very disappointed in this project, uh four and a half years, you say six years, three submittals. Again, I'm looking at the same, I made some of these comments four and a half years ago. And it's like, like the canopy, for example. I mean, that's not Art Deco at all. Um so at this point, I'm really not inclined to send this back with a million conditions to do an approval and a million conditions. And that being said, I will make the motion tonight to deny the application. And do I need to read that in the description? Um or do we just wait for a minute?
Uh so if you're making the motion to deny, you maybe read the resolution and then.
Okay, so I'm making.
After you do so, I can jump in and give a little bit of.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, so I am making the motion to deny resolution number twenty-two dash zero seven. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Bulton, California, approving a final development plan eighteen dash FDP dash zero one and conditional use permit eighteen dash CUP dash zero one for a new gas station, convenience store and quick serve restaurant located at six fifty-three Avenue of Flags Assessor Parcel Number zero nine nine three zero 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 one seven.
Um and I'll just mention um before that, uh before um we see where the commission goes. So um just of the information to the commission. So the commission does have the authority to deny the project. Um if the project is, there's sort of two scenarios here. If the project is denied, um basically, if the applicant were to, if they wished to come back and reapply and address the comments, they could do so. There is a possibility that if um they um if they, if they did want to come back, it would, they would have to wait a year for our code to resubmit. So that's the way the code is written.
Okay.
However, there are some instances um in which they could potentially come back um before a year. But that would take um action on the part of the planning commission to basically direct staff to um to interpret the code in such a way to allow that to occur. So it's it's basically um up to the commission. And and of course, we have to bring back recommend that the a resolution for denial um with those specifications in that they, if they so chose to. So um just that, those, that tidbit of information um for um the motion and um to consider.
Okay. So we have two options to, I mean, so.
With with the denial route, there's it's it's, there's two routes, I guess, to go. One would be.
One year or less than one year.
Right.
Okay.
To wait one year and it and you just, yeah.
Okay.
Do we stipulate the option of having them come back ear- at an earlier date if they can provide the information?
So basically, um there's a code section um in our code, um nineteen oh eight oh three oh that basically there's uh certain instances um in which um an applicant applicant can reapply um before the one year. Um one of them in particular being when um if if the applicant were to submit new plans um with new information that wasn't available at the time, um then the the planning commission could um interpret the code section such as that, that um the new plans with the new information in the Art Deco um components addressed, that could be considered um to be that exception under that code. If um if if that's the route that the commission would like to go.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so that's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So roll call. Chair Hamel.
I.
Commissioner Sarkia.
I.
Commissioner Blockdike.
I.
Commissioner Ligon.
I.
Vice Chair Mercado.
I.
So basically, what we will do is we will bring back a denial resolution with some language in there um allowing the applicants to come back potentially uh prior to the one year.
Okay, and that will come to our next meeting. Okay. Okay. And thank you for your time. So. Onto other business. I don't think there is anything. And do we have any written communications? No, planning commissioner comments, anything anybody's up to or announcements to be made or? So I wanted to just say, because this is the first uh real planning commission we've had since our couple joint planning commission meetings with city council. I just wanted to give a shout out to uh former councilman or retired councilman Ed Andresek. Um he was a public servant of the City of Bulton for many, many years. He served on the planning commission for many years and then city council and then vice mayor and mayor and all that kind of stuff. He was very supportive of me when I decided to apply for planning commission and he was always just a huge wealth of knowledge of the city, the politics, the valley, everything. So I just want to.
Even before we were.
Exactly. I know he was on committees that were before we were incorporated. So I just want to give a shout out and happy retirement to Ed.
Yeah, great mentor.
And now, planning director report.
Yeah, just a really uh brief uh report tonight. I just wanted to, and it's in the um departmental report that was coming out today, but I also just wanted to mention it today um at the meeting. We have a couple, as of a couple of weeks ago, maybe a little over two weeks ago, end of August, the zoning clearance was approved for a project at Central Avenue and First Street. So this is actually um a portion of the Central Homes project site.
Oh.
So um in this instance, this project is um, it's basically, it's two separate parcels. Um two of the three that were originally a part of the Central Homes project. So these are the two northernmost parcels um on that project site. Both seventy-five hundred square feet individual parcels. And so it was approved on that lot was um each lot has a duplex two-story and a detached avenue two-story with access along um Central Avenue um and a drive, shared driveway access between the two parcels. And I'm just mentioning this because um, you know, obviously, the project did not come before the planning commission. Um and that is because the code um requires a zoning clearance for this type of in in the multifamily residential, this type of a project qualifies for basically administrative zoning clearance approval. So I just wanted to bring that up and mention to you that that was um reviewed and approved. Um and just because you, you know, you have, the planning commission would not have seen that. So wanted to make you aware of that project, um that project site. And we have.
Now, is that under new ownership?
That's correct.
Okay, that's kind of what I understood.
And basically, um what occurred because of this new approval is the Central Homes project has been withdrawn. So new ownership, that project's been withdrawn and this new project. So if you guys like, would like to, feel free to stop by.
Okay, cool, cool.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Okay, with that, we will adjourn at seven eighteen.